Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for joining us today. In lieu of our normal work session, we've been planning for a mid-year winter retreat to go over a lot of really important information as it pertains to the school's assessments, the accountability plan, and information that supports that material. I want to thank Dr. Boone and the administration for working together with our committee of Ms. Campson and Ms. Bassin on this project. We know that you all have put lots of time and energy into bringing together all of the important information that will help us in the discussion and the next steps for our division. So, this is going to be a retreat-style meeting. We're going to get some information up front, and then we're going to have a board discussion towards the latter part of the meeting, and really excited to get the conversation going. So, without further ado, Dr. Boone.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Dr. Gabriel, members of the board, and ladies and gentlemen. The first portion of the retreat, the members of the senior leadership team, the district leadership team, want to spend a little bit of time looking at the school quality profiles and school accreditation information. Throughout the summer and fall, the board, you know, has asked, how do we know what we're doing in those schools that are most challenged? And how do we know whether or not it's making a difference? And so, our goal in the next hour is to be able to share that information and to be able to discuss what the practices are, what the work that's ongoing, and the deliverables around that. Leading off the conversation will be Dr. Bailey and Ms. Chavis, and they are also supported by Dr. Gray and Mr. Coleman in terms, and Mr. Foody, as it relates to what we're doing around all of this work. So, with that, I'll turn it over to, thank to Dr. Bailey.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Boone, and good afternoon, everyone. As Dr. Boone mentioned, we will talk briefly about some things, just as a review of some of the information that we have shared with you in previous presentations. Certainly, as it relates to our school improvement, which is identified using the ESSA criteria, we wanted to make sure that you're aware of the indicators for the ESSA criteria. So, one of the things they look at are the pass rates for reading and math, growth in reading and math, high school graduation indicator, progress in English learners, which is a new thing, eventually chronic absenteeism, and then school accreditation rating. The two types of categories that they have identified are comprehensive support and improvement, as well as targeted support and improvement. The comprehensive support are only for the Title I schools. So, if you're a Title I school, then you get evaluated based on the criteria. And certainly, step one, looking at reading and math, looking at the lowest two quartiles of that group. Then, step two, looking at the lowest two quartiles based on the EL progress of that group. And then, the last step is looking at their benchmark if they did not meet the chronic absenteeism, or they are not accredited. Here is a list of our schools. I thought it might be important for you to know or see those schools that were previously identified as priority of focus, and those that are now considered comprehensive or targeted schools. I forgot to mention that those that are in the targeted category can be any school. You do not have to be a Title I school. Let's take a few minutes here. You can see that Lindenwood was not originally a priority school, and now they are comprehensive. Norville Elementary was a focus school. They are no longer identified under the new ESSA rules. Same thing for Southside STEM and St. Helena. These next few slides, I'm not going to really cover them, however, you have them to refer to as we have discussions throughout this afternoon. So, the long-term goals certainly for the state. We also have these benchmark ratings that the state has identified per ESSA that they will be monitoring out to 2023-24. So, we have our reading targets, math targets, graduation indicator. It's important to note that the target way out to 23-24, 24-25, for all students is 75 percent. For math is 70 percent. It's very similar to accreditation ratings. The EL progress targets, those are new. The chronic absenteeism targets are new, and the participation rate is not new. We are familiar with that. I'm sorry.
Oh, wait, no. So, if their percentage is, does it have a percent sign? So, when it's caught?
Yes.
So, the targets for all, for the absenteeism, those are actual numbers of children?
It's a percent.
Oh, that is a percent.
It's a percent.
So, there are all these percentages?
Yes, they're all percent.
Percent sign?
Yes, I'm sorry about that.
Stuff like, everyone gets nine?
Yeah. No, I'm sorry. It should be a percent sign there, but yeah, that's the intention. Okay, and at this point, I will turn it over to Ms. Chavis.
Information that you requested from us regarding, as Dr. Boone has said, our support to these schools and what that support looks like, how is it different from the other schools who may be fully accredited, or even the schools that are conditionally accredited? In your green folder that you have in front of you, as you're aware, and you heard us talk, and you've got questions about the school improvement grant that the schools were required to complete. These particular schools, again, were required to complete, it's a lengthy process, in the development of their school improvement grant. And part of that was identifying the, based on what the state had set, targets that they did not meet based on the benchmarks set aside. And from that, they had to then develop a plan around how they were going to go about meeting those targeted areas. And it was, again, based on the data that was reviewed beginning during the summer. And so, the, actually, the state was pleased that this was not something that we just started, that we, while we just had to train, I think, in November around the school improvement grant process, we started to work in the spring and in the summer with our principals once the data was released. So, they've been working on that. You heard me mention also, in the fall, that we had our school improvement template that we've been working with our schools on. They said allowed us to continue to use that template with a few modifications, and that's in your folders. In the green folder that you have, we've provided for you an overview of the grant that was submitted, information on each of the schools that had to submit a grant. And the format pretty much is the same for each of those, the information that you have. So, you have an overarching goal for each school, and then there were a total of eight domains that the schools could write their school improvement grant around based on their data. Four of those domains, possibly five, were in the academic area. There was also one on leadership, and then community and family engagement. What you would see is you have, when you have an opportunity to look through these, is that for our schools, we selected from and based on their data, they each have domains, academic domains, and they, two or three may also have domains related to the culture or the discipline or safety of the school. And so, you'll see that as part of the overview. So, again, on the template, there's the overarching goal, and then they had to develop a target goal, or a SMARTY goal, for each of the areas that were identified as part of improvement area, and that's what you see under the different domains. In this case, Isaiah Gardens is the first one in your packet. You see in literacy, Dr. Kirk has his goal, as well as for math, the goal, the targets for this school year. And then, under that, you see some of the items listed as budgetary request. So, this is the format for each of the schools, and I can tell you that pretty much for, in each case, the schools were set aside in funds for professional development. They're for both the administrators in the building, as well as teachers in the building. Some of that professional development is in the form of what they're currently receiving with our focus schools partners. There's what we call executive coaching. That's one-on-one coaching with our focus school partner. And in some cases, the focus school's partner is also working with instructional leadership teams in each school. And so, principals have requested to continue that and to have funding to support that. So, you'll see that in some of the requests. Another trend would be substitute teachers, and that's for planning, to provide extended planning for teachers from this point until, well, once they find out when the grant is approved, but to provide additional time for teachers to plan during the school year. You'll also see in the request or in the overview that there was planning for summer, planning and training with teachers. There may be conferences. There's the Virginia Reading Association Conference is here in Norfolk this year. There's also the Curriculum Development Conference that some have applied for. And depending on when we get notice as to whether or not and when the grant is approved, they may or may not be able to attend those. We were originally told that we would know in sometime January whether or not the grant, what would be approved, and I just learned on yesterday that it may not be until March. And so, they are, as of yesterday, they'd not begun the review of our grants. It was to start this week, and then depending on when the funds are released will determine really what the schools will be able to accomplish based on the plans that they have submitted. What you'll find, if you turn over from that cover page, so that's really an idea, an overall picture, some things that were included in the budget, supplies for professional development as far, and as well as classroom supplies that were outlined. The very next page behind Dr. Kirk's overview is the executive summary that each school also had to submit. And you'll see at the top, it has the overarching goal, and then it has continuous improvement plan, the school administrative information. And this also follows the format for each grant that was submitted. There's some demographic information on the school, and then it goes into an instructional overview. There's data provided, that schools provided to the state, and these were required components of the plan. Once they reviewed the data, the strengths and weaknesses that they were able to identify as part of that data review, the, one of the nice things about when we actually submitted our grants right before, Friday before holiday, well, actually, it had started the holiday for the schools, but we submitted that Friday. You may have heard us talk before about data rotations that we do with principals here in Central, and that's with each of the four content areas, other departments, to include HR, student support services, special ed, gifted. So, the rotations had occurred just prior to us needing to submit the grant. So, they were able to then glean additional information to help drive what was going to be a part of their grants, to help to also extend the data review that they'd already done. Behind Dr. Kirk's, that last data page in his overview, you see the school improvement And once again, we shared our school improvement template with you, I think, in September or October. And I mentioned at that time that we'll be working on the school improvement grants, and that we've been actually making a few modifications, but the state was fine with what, the basis of what we had. And so, I'm sharing this with you to show what those modifications were, and that's what you see in blue. There were two strands. Each strand had a number of domains. And in this particular case, you see Dr. Kirk's overarching goal, which is also what you saw on that budget overview page. You can see in each of the areas that he's identified that they are working to improve, again, the SMARTY goal, and then the task around those goals. And so, the difference in what we have as a district and what these schools were required to include in their plan are those components I just shared with you. Everything else the state was fine with what we, the plans that we had. We also added, I think, one other area by way of timeframe for some things to be completed. We had a timeframe for completion. They access to expand that a little bit. So, the schools, again, the schools have developed their plans based on the data from the spring and fall, submitted those in first of October. They've been working from their plans. We had the training with the state regarding the school improvement plan in November. We went back and made the modifications to the plan, and the schools have been really working towards these goals, really since October, since the data came in. Because what typically happens is principals spend the summer, they even will call their instructional leadership teams in during the summer for a retreat or planning session to set the stage for what's going to happen in the fall once the data is in. And so, they've been working on this for some time. We will continue to, one of the requirements is that the schools have to share the school improvement progress, review any additional tasks that may need to happen, or if there's a particular task that's included that they want to revisit, because at that point, it may not be realistic. It may not be something they're finding that's going to have the most impact. And so, we've asked them each quarter, every school, not just these schools, that they have to update their plan, review that with staff, with instructional leadership teams as part of that update process, and then tweak. We, our process is that as they're reviewing and updating, that they do it in a different color font, because we know that's where the updates have happened. In our mid-year rotations with them, we're sitting and going through the school improvement plans, and again, providing further updates as necessary. And so, that's the, we can share that as far as the support to these schools, in our schools, other schools that may not be fully accredited, that we've, the amount of time that's spent in those schools looks differently from schools that are fully accredited by way of support to those schools, with the coordinators and specialists and the instructional resource teachers being in those schools. We also, as part of what's different, I mentioned the coaching and support from focus schools, they're in those schools more frequently than they are the other schools. It's around their support. And we also have, even with us, executive directors, that we give those schools more frequent attention, and in those schools more frequently than some of the others. And so, we've, as part of our SMARTY goals, we're looking at that more additional direct support to our schools, although we've identified, the three of us, that the indirect support is also impacting the work that happens at the schools as well. So, we're giving them the additional attention that they need to get the job done by way of additional resources. If they're identifying barriers, a new process where we have, that Dr. Gray is leading with, as part of the district leadership team, where there's a team that goes into the schools, we call it the TOES team, made up of operations, HR, school plan, everybody around the table, meeting with principals to say, how are things going? What else do you need from us to get that work done? And that has been quite, and so, there's an update that's done with DLT at our meetings to say, how are the schools coming, and what are we, what else do we need to do to provide that support to schools, to make life easier for them and get the job done.
So, if I may, the TOES team work, again, looks at not only the instructional piece, we have the intensive focus on what happens instructionally, academically with the teams. But the TOES teams are also, what are the things that can take something off the plates of the principals, perhaps, in terms of operationally efficiencies and those pieces of how we think about the work? And so, it forces us to, again, not push down, but to receive up from the schools, what it is they think that they need to be most successful. And we work very diligently to close some of those gaps. And the TOES teams report back to the district leadership team, and we will often have conversations around what our district needs versus an individual school need. And then, those things that we see are systemic, then we get about addressing those in a meaningful way for progress.
And the feedback has been very good from principals. They've appreciated not just the executive directors being around the table with them, but a true team approach with that theory of action. That's what that's about, you know, all hands on deck to make it happen for our schools. I do want to point out, as you'll notice, as you review the school improvement plans, that one thing that was intentional this year that we did not include last year was a specific essential action and task around our students with disabilities population, to make sure that we're addressing deliberate about the support that they need, because as we look at data, that is the one area that we know, that we continue to need to give attention to. So, they were, schools were required to include that as a part of their plan this year. That's an overview of the SIG process and the plans and what we're doing.
And in the green folder, you have the exact same information for each school
Yes.
that applied for the C grant.
Yes. And so, again, then, they're, they may be under review as we speak. We don't know. As of yesterday, they were not. We do have a meeting scheduled for this Friday, so we may get some input or some feedback as to where they are with the grants. And we were originally told that schools possibly have the funding to proceed with implementing in January, and there's been a delay on that. It could be March, it could be April. So, I'm not sure what that impact would be.
So, the work doesn't stop.
Right.
You know, we are supporting the work in a meaningful way. Many of the practices, what goes on with the instructional leadership team, where we want to go beyond what we were doing. We aren't waiting for the state to approve the grants for this work.
So, things that will be impacted, you'll see in the review, the budget, was we, each, five of the elementary schools, well, the elementary schools that have had to submit, we're looking at some software for master scheduling to support schools and make that easier for schools, elementary schools in particular, as they're planning around what the school day looks like, making sure that the resources are there, be resource classes, that they have a lot of time for those, the support from the SPED department. So, that will be impacted based on the approval of the grant. When it's approved, we'll be able to move forward for next year, one way or the other, but the work will continue to happen regardless.
Question, since you're waiting, you have to wait, wait to January, now it's March, it might be April, what's the timeline of that grant? It's not, they're not giving you a grant that suddenly has to be spent by end of September?
Yes, it is. So, the funds would need to be encumbered by the end of September for our schools with our process. Some of that is summer training, again, so the funds would have to be encumbered by September 3rd, but what I was told on yesterday was that. And then, the original process was that schools would have to apply all over again for next year, even though they are, they know that from this year, another application next year, this process again. As of yesterday, they're thinking, they being VDOEs, thinking that if anything, they will have the schools just to amend the grant and amend their budgets instead of starting all over again, which was a process.
They would get the next budget?
For the next school.
That money would come rolling in in September?
So, well.
Well, yeah. I've been there, done that, I know how that goes.
It would probably be October, and that depends on the federal budget approval. If we have a federal budget, October 1, then the federal funds can flow to the states. And the question is whether or not these funds are already in the states for use for multiple years, or whether they have to wait for each appropriation year.
This is the money, this is the grant that's, they're planning the school improvement grant?
It's still called school improvement grant, but the requirements are very different.
And so, when the schools wrote, we told them to, you know, not plan for a full year of fund, of funding, that they knew that at that point, it was January till end of summer, really, is what we said. So, what you see also are some part-time positions for teachers to support the area of science, since we know that's an area that we need to continue to improve in, or additional support for reading or math. That may or may not happen, but they knew not to plan for a full year. Now, we just have to step back and plan for maybe two months instead of.
So, it makes it more challenging to hire boots on the ground with the money?
Well, we
And they make you do a lot of things?
We were, excuse me, I didn't mean to cut across you. We were very judicious in how many people we put into these grants. You know, as we were talking at our recent governance training, we have to think about sustainability beyond the grant period. And so, what you see primarily in this is how do we support the staff that we have versus using additional staff to make it, to move through these grant opportunities? And so, that was one of the things, I was very clear with the team, that we don't need to build, fill these grants with lots of people. We need to fill these grants to figure out how we build capacity to the people we have to better deliver the results. Some other grants, you might see Title I or something else, we might have some additional people, but these grants, we were not putting a lot of people in.
Are you putting in the possibility of them bringing in part-time, like retired teachers to do part-time interventions?
Yes.
They have that money.
That's in here.
Because that's not a commitment. That's, you don't start them till the money rolls in.
That's right.
And then, if it doesn't roll in next year, you don't get them back.
The other thing, by, I'm sorry, by way of positions, is that our schools that are receiving the hard-to-staff funding, money, Lindenwood and Jacobs, that district funds are for the teachers. They've also included funding for the paraprofessionals in the building to offset because we're not able to do that. So, they were real happy to be able to do that.
I think Toni, I feel like she was trying to get in.
Yeah. Thank you for all of this information. And you touched on it, because I, one of the things that I picked up on is the plan around special education. So, there's an essential actions plan around that. And you touched, you answered part of the question, because my next question was around staffing to support special education. So, I understand not adding staff, but building the capacity. So, does, how, you know, because I see in some instances where, where it says in the budget requests here, professional development, and then paraprofessionals that are included here, but I assume that even within where that general education teachers, that that PD will be there around special education?
Yes.
It may not, I may not just see it here, right?
One of the critical aspects of improving our students with disabilities is making sure first and foremost they have access to the core curriculum.
Yes, right.
And, you know, that's one of those bridges that even higher ed is trying to figure out how to build, because historically, special educators were there to do the modifications and support the students, not necessarily to deliver the core content curriculum. And so, that's no fault of our special educators. That's the way in which they were trained, and that's been the case nationally. So, a lot of what we're doing is making sure that our special educators are part of our district-wide professional development around literacy, math, science, and social studies, so that we're equipping them with ways to then get into the work of how do you modify and support the curriculum for students with disabilities. And I know Kim, I'm sorry.
I was just going to share two schools in particular that we've been working very closely with. One is Granby, and they've been doing some extended planning times with the general ed teachers and the inclusion teachers. And we've done that collectively with Janice's department and also the math department in Ingleside, both of those departments as well. Math, the assistant principal, and the special education team have been doing a book talk with their gen ed teachers and the inclusive teachers. So, we've really been trying to build that foundation of them having really a period of time to learn and grow and talk together. And in the one case, we've seen that, in the one school, the students have outscored what some of our division numbers were in the first benchmark assessment, so.
Dr. Cattado has been attending the meetings with the special ed teachers and provided additional professional development there. I think he's attending monthly, actually. So, there's a presence with the, at the SPED meetings for the instructional component for our teachers.
And my next question, and I say this with limited understanding of VAP and how the identification process occurs around which children are eligible to take that, but are teachers being trained to administer, yeah, like, I mean, I assume so, but I just, yeah.
And remember, yeah, go ahead. Okay. The VAP assessment is designed for our students who have the greatest cognitive and/or physical impairments that allows them to be challenged in fully accessing the core curriculum.
Okay.
So, this is, VAP is an alternate assessment
Right.
for students who cannot participate with the standard set of modifications in their SOL testing. That's a portfolio assessment, and the data are collected all throughout the year to be able to demonstrate based on the goals in the IEP that a student has mastered a set of the Virginia standards for that particular core content and what that looks like.
Okay. And so, they have to do the IEP to?
Thank you.
They're going to come in and tell you. So, you just go, okay.
Through the IEP team process, students with disabilities are determined if they qualify for VAP assessments. Throughout the school year, starting in October, our department, along with our program specialist and program administrator, meets with the designated teachers who are in what you may consider the self-contained programs or the career development programs, and they meet with them monthly to go over the ASOLs, which are part of VAP, because VAP is an SOL. And so, they meet with them monthly to read over the, you know, to look at the portfolios to see, okay, you're on the right track, okay, maybe you need to do this, we need to add this. So, monthly, they are getting that support from our office. And we do pretty good on our VAP scores, don't we, Dr. Bailey?
And that's the reason I was like, you know, I need to learn more about it, because when looking through the data, you know, and looking at the disability, the data around our students with disabilities, I was like, wow, you know, the performance on the VAPs is quite different. So, I just wanted to be sure I understood what the criteria are for eligibility to even take it, and, and then, you know, as I was looking at the VDOE, and also just making sure, I think one of their aims is that teachers are trained to be able to identify and deliver. So, I just wanted to ask that question.
The type of assessment and the accommodations for the assessments are determined through the IEP meetings.
Okay.
Nationally, both through IDEA and then with states, it's expected that fewer than 2% of a district's eligible population of students with disabilities Nationally, both through IDEA and then with states, it's expected that fewer than 2% of a district's eligible population of students with disabilities should qualify for the VAP assessments. And I think Virginia pushes hard on one, one and a half percent fewer than that. And, so it's not a large pool.
It's not, yeah.
By, by design, it's not a large pool, because the belief is that all other students should be able to access the, the core curriculum and the standards and with, with accommodations and modifications in order to be successful. So that could be a child who needs a read aloud on the test to be read to them in order to respond, you know, various accommodations like that.
Okay, thank you.
One final piece for me regarding the school improvement grants, by way of monitoring the state, how they're monitoring the implementation of the grants through the work that we're doing, is there will be periodic visits, may it be attending, we have a liaison who's been assigned to us with VDOE. It's different from some districts that were required to also have what we call an OP, an other, we call it an other person, because we don't really know what that title is. But our liaison with VDOE, the School Improvement Office, will be visiting us periodically, attending meetings. We're also going to give her access to our folder where the school's improvement plans will be housed, so that, that limits the visits, and that we've not been asked to go to Richmond, which is a good thing. That we will be continuing to submit the monthly memos that you get about things that are happening in these schools, we'll continue that. And then there'll be some teleconferencing and web, webconferencing by way of monitoring.
Those are some of those flexibilities that we've been able to garner and gain by building a strong relationship with VDOE to talk about what's happening. And, and as we've done those required quarterly meetings or other meetings, it's been very clear that the plans and the actions that we've said we were going to put in place have been initiated, and because of that, they are willing to work with us. And as, as Jackie was saying, none of the district's leadership team has had to go to Richmond for any of the meetings or any of the support. Richmond has come to us, and we've not had to appear before the State Board of Education, because, again, we have delivered on what we said we were going to do, and they see us staying true to the model, and they see us not going very broad in the work, but really going deeper in the work. And that's one of the things that's aligned with their thinking. Too often, there's so many, there's this program, there's that program, there's this monitoring tool. And what you see here is the same process that we have for all of our schools, including schools that have been accredited over time, because there's still room for growth and improvement, even in those schools. You don't reach a height and say, okay, now I'm done. There's always continuous improvement. So we have a district focus on how we get there, and then we strengthen and, and go deeper in the requirements and the system of support in this targeted and comprehensive designated schools, so that you can see the difference in the efforts, as well as ultimately the results that are coming from those.
My question, about how much money are we talking about for this particular year's grant?
I didn't do a total, each total by school.
It's, it's a few million.
It's a few million, yes, uh huh.
They didn't give us a prescribed amount, and we had to then build around. They told us, describe your, take your plan, and describe what's the system of support that you think you need to implement your plan, in addition to what you have in place, and then assess the dollar amounts to those, and then they will vet the plans through that lens.
Can the monies be used for enrichment as well?
I'll look at Jackie, because what's in the plan is, right, but I think enrichment is part of it.
And there's also family involvement engagement for a couple of schools that wanted to add that, so they have the flexibility. It's a matter of what video you will approve, but it's in the plan.
Right, okay, great.
Dr. Bailey?
All right, well, thank you.
Moving on, we talked about, a little bit about the ESSA indicators, and just wanted to just remind us, as we move forward into talking about data and accountability plans and so forth, that these are our indicators for the Virginia State accreditation. Certainly, we have three categories, achievement, achievement gaps, and student engagement. And so we reviewed some of this earlier this school year, but we just wanted to bring you back to this. The benchmarks for some of this is a little different than ESSA. And so we'll see where one of the benchmarks is different in our activity. And so, to begin our activity, I wanted to, this, this particular indicator is an indicator that the administration or DLT had an activity around, and we unpacked attendance and chronic absenteeism. And one of the questions that we queried ourselves with is, what do we think we know about attendance? And so this particular portion is a little bit interactive. So, you know, if you could share with me your thoughts, what do you think you know about attendance or attendance here in Norfolk Public Schools?
And if I can, before you go into Karen's question, when we review data this summer, as a district leadership team, we decided what would be our first focus area. And we chose attendance for a number of reasons. First, a child needs to be in school in order to be able to access the core curriculum and begin that level of success. And two, when you look at the student engagement aspects, chronic absenteeism is one of the indicators. So, you know, what are the things that we could begin to impact? We also looked at that, because long-term, there may be some policy implications that we would be coming to the board with, as it relates to how we address attendance. So that's how chronic absenteeism got to the table. We'll be working through others of these, but this was the first one we, we launched in, in summer during our retreat.
And so, you know, the floor is open, not yet, not yet. So the floor is open. What do you think you know about attendance and attendance here at Norfolk Public Schools?
And this is a question posed to the board members?
Yes, 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 because the administration has gone through it.
Go down the line.
Oh.
All right.
About attendance.
Now, go ahead, come on.
Ask the general question again. I know in some instances, it is greater than we think, and in other instances, it's not nearly as bad as we think.
Yeah.
What I know, so one of the things would be, I think I know, is that attendance for the 11th and 12th graders is an issue.
For me, when I was reviewing the data, what jumped out was that not necessarily schools who have a performance challenge had a challenge with attendance. It didn't always correlate.
Right.
So that was something that I thought was important to note.
Some of our, potentially some of our policies regarding suspensions may have a correlation with attendance.
Uh huh.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, that was the biggest one that I saw.
Tag along.
Yeah, yeah.
That was, that was one of mine, and the, yeah, yeah. And I think that would have policy implications, but I also think, and this is just think, you know, I think our attendance overall looked, looked good, better than I thought it was going to look based on the data. But I also believe that some policy changes that we may have in the pipeline coming up, such as the start times, may impact attendance across all levels, and I think we'll see that. That's my prediction, my prediction, yeah, that we'll see that.
I think that we have to look at how we address attendance differently based on the level children are in. I think at the elementary level, attendance is, when there are attendance problems, is more parent, originates with parent behavior, and as they get older, it's more student-driven. And so we would need to not have like, just one way to address attendance problems of kids who are chronically absent. We would need to look at it from the point of view of what age they are and which level of school they're in, to see, because, I mean, you could be buying alarm clocks for kids in elementary school to help them get up on their own, because they want to come to school, whereas in the high school, children are making their own decision not to come.
Well, that's good. You know, we had a, a lot of those same comments, as well as comments about whether everybody thinks attendance is important. Does everybody know what the attendance is? Do we know what impacts attendance? Some of us know, and some of us think we know, but some of the things we thought impacted attendance didn't impact attendance that much, but some other things we didn't think about did. And so as, as part of this activity, you're, you're receiving a sheet, two sheets of paper. Let's go to the chart first. And certainly, I would like.
With the accountant fold.
Right. Thank Ms. Rhonda again, how you finally mastered big sheets. All right.
I have one question while we are continuing on.
Yes.
All these pieces of paper we're getting, are there going to be electronic versions available?
Yes, yes, yes. I can send it to you, yes.
Oh, have him prepare that he has to turn the paper.
I know. I can't even pass it out right.
And you don't know how to open it, right?
So we know, as Dr. Boone mentioned, that if, with attendance, if students don't come to school, then they don't learn. And years ago, when we did a triangulation of our data to see what has the biggest impact, what attendance has the biggest impact on a content area, it has the biggest impact on math. And so we know there's certain concepts you learn every day, it's a build upon concept, a content area. So attendance, chronic absenteeism is a part of attendance. You are considered chronically absent if you are missing 10% of your days in membership. And so with respect, our academ, I mean, our accreditation indicator is if 15% or more of your students are chronically absent, then you end up in being in one of the levels, either green, yellow, or red. So what you're looking at before you is some information on chronic absenteeism by our schools, high school, middle school, our K-8, 3-8 schools, and then our elementary. And I did put our auxiliary, or our early childhood centers there too. When they measure chronic absenteeism, pre-K is not included, it's only K through 12. We also have paired schools. Paired schools, chronic absenteeism is calculated separately, okay? So we have PB Young in Tyrewood Park, and we have Poplar Halls and Fair Lawn. And what I found out is, is that, let's say for Fair Lawn, if Fair Lawn has met all of the other academic measures, and they did not meet the chronic absenteeism measure, then they could be accredited with conditions and not fully accredited. However, Poplar Halls, if they met the criteria for chronic absenteeism, and they also, and with the other academic indicators for Fair Lawn, they will then be considered fully accredited. So that's a little different with what we have been thinking in prior years, prior to this indicator being added. So that's a little different.
It's a little counterintuitive. You would think if they were paired, they were paired for everything, and that the absenteeism rate, there would be perhaps a, an average or an aggregated one between the two schools, but rather, they, they are treating these schools independently for that purpose.
Right.
So, but, but one of the schools has the 3 through 5, which has the testing in it, and the other one does not.
Right.
And so just, can you, if you don't mind, just say one more time what you just said, so it can sink.
Right, okay, sure. Fair Lawn and Poplar Halls paired together.
Yes.
Fair Lawn has 3 through 5. They've met all of the achievement and the academic indicators, so they're all green, okay? However, their chronic absenteeism is in the red, because that's one way that you can then not be fully accredited.
This is an example, it's not natural.
An example, okay, okay.
Yeah, because you, I know you're seeing green on your paper.
Okay, all right, yeah, that's me.
And so for Poplar Halls, okay, they will then be evaluated with the same academic and achievement gap indicators. So because Fair Lawn was all green, it's all green for them too. However, their chronic absenteeism is in the green.
Oh, okay.
So they then will be considered fully accredited, and Fair Lawn will be accredited with conditions.
Okay.
Because of the.
Because of the. So that's how it can have an impact.
Interesting, okay.
So there are other things that impact chronic absenteeism, but I just want to step you through looking at the data. I tried to use the color scheme of green, yellow, and red to help draw your memory about, you know, what's good, what's almost good, and what's not quite there. So you have three data measures here. Certainly, you have the prior two years, 2017, 18 was the first year that we saw this, 2016, 17 has now been, that information was given to us the latter part of December by VDOE, so that we could see a comparison. Because as what we are used to, if you don't meet it within the current year, then they do a three-year average, okay?
For the absenteeism too, then?
For the absenteeism too, okay? And so we pulled this data as of January 7th, and we have been looking at this data really since October. So every so often, or once a month, we pull this data, we lay it out on here, and we see how the color configuration lays out. And so we, we have also not only provided the information in chart format, but we have put it in a graph format, in case you think, you feel that it's easier for you to analyze who's in, who's out, okay?
And remember that first threshold is 15% or fewer of students absent, 10% or more. Yes, so 15%, that's the secondary, and, and the K-8s, and then this is elementary. So 15%, we want to be below 15.
Right. Ms. Smith?
Can you explain to us, University of Washington, 1617 school year, Northside, 1718 school year, Norview, 1617 school year? They seem to be outside of the.
Right.
Criteria, but they have a different.
Coloring, yes. And so what that means, the R-10, is a reduction, a reduction in the rate. And so it's like a reverse formula. And so I don't have some exact numbers here to explain it to you, but I could share that with you. If you reduce the chronic absenteeism a certain percentage, then they feel, but you didn't meet the benchmark, they feel like, they want to give you credit for that. And so those areas that have been identified by R-10 are the areas that the schools were given credit for, and then associated with the coloring, either green, yellow, or red.
So they saw a reduction of 10% from the prior year's attendance. And so it almost becomes a form of a growth model, like we see for academics, we see for some of these other student engagement pieces. So a school reduced its chronic absenteeism rate by about 10%, that is recognized by VDOE. And so you continue to build upon it. Didn't hit the target, but they, they acknowledge the improvements that have occurred in the school during that year, from year to year.
So it's part of the overall new growth model for accreditation. They applied it also to absenteeism. Basically, yes.
I use the term growth model. The state won't say it that way, but I, but I understand.
Yeah, I agree, and I agree with that.
We had it even in the old No Child Left Behind, there were some reduction opportunities that would factor in, but they continued that in chronic absenteeism.
And so as you look at the data, do you see any surprises, some ahhs, or confirmation?
Can I ask one clarifying question? Are we saying that in order to be in the greens, then you have to be 0 to 15? Yellow is 15 to 25, and then red is 25 and greater? Okay.
We gave you the bars too, because it's, you know, looking at the numbers is one way, but the visual of the bars, bar graph is helpful.
Do you want to start?
Well, to answer, so previously, when, when we were first provided this data, what I found surprising is, is to see an elementary school even exceeding some of our high schools. And so, but to Lauren's point, or Ms. Campson's point earlier, understanding the difference in attendance, like, you know, that it's also, what are the parent or guardian, or, you know, what are some other factors? Or, you know, what are some other factors that are influencing that?
In essence, what is, what's the story behind the numbers?
The story behind the number, right.
And, and so, right. So there are a number of factors, and this is, Erin is going to lead us here.
A complex, yeah.
Yes, there, there are a lot of stories behind the numbers. When we continued our discussions, we found that when there's inclement weather, students that normally walk to school may not come. We also found that certainly the philosophy of the parent, we know that at the elementary grade level, certainly from K to five, they get the students to school. It starts to drop off a little bit, six through eight, and then nine through 12, it's a little bit different. And so, you know, we know that there are other things that entertain our students, and so therefore they may not attend on a regular basis or attend all of their classes. So those are some of the things that can have an impact on attendance and thus chronic absenteeism.
As part of our DLT sessions, we've also identified that there are, we've kind of put them in big buckets, practices, whether it's our disciplinary practices that we, that was mentioned before, that could lead to some percentages that we see. It may be the way the attendance is coded. You know, I think we gave an example before. If a student comes in late, they may originally have been coded as absent. Do we look back to then code that student as tardy? We've identified there's some professional development with our different staff in the building, whether it's those that are working directly with discipline, our deans, our assistant principals, making sure that the system that's in place for determinative disposition to a particular behavior is followed. It could be PD or professional development for the staff in the office who's recording the attendance. So there are several things that we've identified as big-ticket items that we know will be on our radar for further discussion and action on.
We've actually held, we're getting ready to hold the third meeting in regards to Monroe's attendance, so we can keep digging deeper. And again, it's not just the school. We have brought Jamie's group into the mix, because one of the things, as we started digging deeper into the pockets, as Ms. Chavis has shared, one of the things that has risen to the surface is they have a number of students who do fall under McKinney-Vento. And we're finding that those students, we don't have the number confirmed, but in a conversation that we had prior to the meeting we're getting ready to hold, it could be up to about 30% of their absenteeism are coming from our McKinney-Vento students. So we've invited Ms. Malinak along with the folk from Elsie Shop, and we're really, now the next meeting will look child by child and how do we address each of those? Because that's definitely impacting-
And if I can, McKinney-Vento represents our students who have been identified, who have self-identified as the families as homeless.
Do you mind if I ask him then?
Oh, that's fine.
For the absenteeism deep dive, I think I know what the answer might be, but you all might uncover something that is different, and that is health concerns for the children in some of these schools. Is it, is it, is it chronic health? Is it getting to doctor's appointments and not being able to be in school because they're attending appointments? But I would like to, to see if there is data from the nurses to say if that's an issue, because, you know, poverty will affect all aspects, education, health, and, and other items. So if that's an issue that needs to come to the surface, then we can bring in some resources to help with that as well.
That came up yesterday in our DLT meeting.
Oh, okay.
About chronic health, chronic, chronic health conditions or something.
And, and it's interesting how those begin to play out, elementary versus secondary. Because you think with a lot of childhood illnesses that the elementary absenteeism would be so much greater due to health issues. But, you know, as we begin to look at the secondary schools is, you know, what's, what are the unreported health issues? Their kids may just say, "I'm not feeling well," but hadn't necessarily told parents enough so that they can, can have intervention in, in all of that.
Lauren, and then Adele, and then Rodney?
I'd, I'd like to see the relationship between the number of children or the percent of children that are chronically absent. And if I took that list of children by name, how many of them would be suspensions? How many of their absences are suspensions? Because if we've got children that are getting put out of school, and when you're suspended-
You're absent.
It's unexcused.
That's right.
Then, well, they're all unexcused. I mean, everything counts, no matter whether it's excused or not. But still, if they're putting, you know, are they suspending more children there than other schools that might have some of the same discipline challenges they do? Or are they looking at more alternative ways? That's like suspending someone for skipping school.
Yeah.
You know?
We had that conversation this morning with-
That's very, that's very self-defeating. The child's rewarded because they want to be out of school, and they suspend them and give them another day out. They're like, "Oh, hallelujah."
Well, even prior to the state confirming that chronic absenteeism would be an indicator, part of what we began to address, we're trying to restore some in-school suspension over the last couple of years, was the, you know, we've been able to do it incrementally based on funding. But the goal was, there are some minor infractions that shouldn't require out-of-school suspension, but certainly needs separation from the class because there need to be consequences. And so that's why you'll see, in each of the budgets I presented to the school board, we've tried to do something with in-school suspension to, because that's an area that was eliminated, I think, in, through the recession. And, and so trying to bring that back, particularly at schools that don't have that system of support.
We have a big supporter of in-school suspension in lieu of out-of-school. Keep them in school.
Ms. Martin?
Well, I guess mine is a more general question about how you're, if you're including both excused and unexcused absences in these absentees, so, you know, suspensions and- So, okay.
So, so let me qualify a little bit of that too. The state's definition accounts for all absences, excused or unexcused. I know, I, I keep thinking about that, and I guess the state figure, well, they could game the system and declare everybody was excused absence, and so then they, we keep our rates, you know. But this is where, when we say down the road, we may come back to the board with policy discussions, because our policy addresses excused and unexcused in terms of a threshold for promotion or having met the criteria for the amount of instructional time during a year. We aren't there yet because we continue to work through, so we wouldn't know what recommendations we'd want to make to the board about that. But that's an example of a policy piece that we will be examining, because it's all attendance in terms of the state assessment.
And also for parents to let them know that, that you're tracking excused and unexcused. Because sometimes, you know, parents might be too busy to call in and they just think, "Oh, well," you know, and then it catches up with them, so.
Well, and that-
There's that piece to it.
And that's a great point, because we do have routine attendance monitoring requirements. The state still requires us to then get seven days' absence, whether that's excused or unexcused. We have to contact a parent to say, there's a letter that goes out, and sometimes a call to say, you know, our records indicate X, Y, and Z. Parents sometimes get frustrated with us because they will have called the school and said, "My child has the flu, my child has chickenpox," you know, whatever happened. But we still have to do that reporting, again, that notice to, to remind them of where they are. We're not negating what's going on, but we still have to let them know.
Rodney, and then Carlos?
Couple of things. One, just on the format of the report, the far-right column ties to the graph to the right. Correct? Chronic absentee rate, school year seventeen, eighteen, ties to the as of January seventh, twenty eighteen?
Yes. Because you look, using the example Booker T., 33.8%, and you see they're almost at the thirty.
So- It would be, personally, I think, being able to, whether it's nineteen, eighteen, seventeen, or seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, seeing them in chronological order. At least as I'm trying to look at trend data, I think it's helpful for the columns.
Yes. I agree, I agree.
Have the graph mimic the table.
I like to look across. We talked to get left, right.
And the reason I raised that, because as I was looking at, in some instances where there are jumps from one year to the other, I didn't know if it could be a coding issue or something else is behind it. But I was trying to look at, over a three-year period, what was occurring.
Then- If I can, on that point, now Karen, am I correct? The state released to us the sixteen, seventeen data because they had not been, they'd just been collecting it but not reporting in this fashion. So we'll have to see what we can go back forward to get a third year in?
No, I'm just saying the order. So you have three here, but it goes nineteen, seventeen, eight.
Oh, I got you, okay.
That's all I said.
Yeah. Yeah, put it up there.
From a, from a observation standpoint, trying to tie some of this to discussions that we're having around educational planning and feeder pathways.
That's right.
You know, I don't know what the survivability rate is at Monroe, but I know at one time Monroe often had significant turnover. So the students that you started with in September were very different from May. But if you have a situation, at least based upon this chart, where you've had this absentee issue at Monroe, and then Monroe largely feeds into Blair, and then Blair largely feeds into Maury, I would be interested in seeing whether or not we're talking about some of the same students over time. Likewise, when you look at Ruffner to Booker T., so, you know, we've heard over some time requests for transportation as students begin to go to Ruffner and, and Booker T. So as someone who sometimes actually is out walking when children are walking through the rain, cross railroad tracks and boulevards, trying to get to Ruffner and Booker T., I think we should examine it both from a feeder pattern perspective, but also looking at those major intersections in terms of whether or not that's having an impact there. But hopefully, as we continue our conversation, we will consider the impact of our feeder pathway patterns and whether or not actions that we take help the situation or may harm the situation unintentionally.
I just had a quick observation I just wanted to make here. First, I do agree with what Mr. Jordan spoke about in regards to the feeder pattern in those schools there. I did want to bring attention to Ocean View Elementary and Poplar Halls, noting that both of them are under 15, but yet they're listed as yellow. Is that because they're-
No, I missed that.
No, 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 no. What I'm seeing is, or did you make it yellow because both of them have had an uptick from their prior year in their absenteeism? And they're close, or is that just something that we're, we're making it yellow so we can focus on it? Because that might be an area of concern?
No, I just missed that, you know?
Okay. I was trying to help.
Ocean Air is correct at a yellow, because it's 15.5, so it has exceeded.
Right, so it'll-
No, no, I'm talking about Ocean View.
Right, but I'm saying, but the one below.
Yeah, I know, because we said fifteen and below, right? Ocean View, where's it? Ocean View, Poplar Hall.
That's what I was asking about. Oh, okay, because I noticed you did.
No, because, but then I look at their seventeen, eighteen, and they went up in both of them. So I was wondering, were we using, or what is our mechanism to identify if we noticed that a school is upticking, even though they may be below the threshold?
So to speak, we're applying, like, the grading system on that particular day measure-
Okay.
-to see where we are. Then we look at the trend. But the, the coloring is not based on trends.
Okay.
Okay.
But the executive directors may want to answer the, the second portion of your question. What do we do when these are examined monthly? So I don't know, Kim, John, Jackie?
Yes.
So-
Share what you do monthly with this.
Well, we get a report on a weekly basis. Now, it's a, it's a pretty significant Excel spreadsheet that has a tremendous amount of data in it, including the student data. So we can go in, and right now, if you were to go to any one of our schools, they would be able to tell you who the students are that are already falling into the chronic, you know, attendance because of where they are. They can also tell you who are, who are those bubble kids, you know, right now that are close to that edge but aren't there yet. And so they're already, you know, putting in place interventions, having the discussions, trying to communicate with parents the importance of attendance and what to do to correct it. It could be everything from attendance makeup to, you know, conferencing, to say what, what's going on, because it might be, you know, a health concern, and, you know, so what are we doing to, to address that? It could be, you know, simply, you know, the, you know, not a compliance piece, but a capturing the right, you know, accuracy of the attendance in terms of whether they're absent or whether it really was a tardy. So, I mean, all of those conversations are taking place, and they're doing it on a student-by-student basis.
One of the things that has really helped is the way we've looked at using the attendance clerks. And now, I heard someone say, talking about, are these the same children sometimes through the feeder? What we're able to do now through the attendance clerk, because they now work with the feeder patterns. So if they find, you know, one of our Monroe babies that's chronically absent, it's that same attendance tech supporting Maury. So we start to have those conversations of, is it the whole family? And what are the supports that we can look at that support them as a family, not just so narrowly focused by school? And the other pieces, for those that we see that are doing well, we do a lot with our principals meetings of people sharing, "Hey, this is a strategy we started doing last month. It's really shown improvement. You may want to start it," so that we can get the good practices out there as well, not just keep pockets of excellence, but spreading it.
All right, Ms. Bessine, and then I have a one follow-up, and then we're going to wrap this up and then go into the next part of the session.
So quick, two questions. So I had another one, as you mentioned, the attendance technicians or clerks. So there is a, is, there is one attendance technician for the feeder? Or not necessarily? Am I?
The way they redesigned, and I'm, I know how ours works. I'd rather-
There are a total of six that are-
Okay.
Attendance technicians that are assigned elementary, from high school to elementary schools.
Okay.
Some of that will be a feeder.
Okay. All right, great. And, and then the second piece. So, you know, I mentioned earlier, as one of the many factors, you know, the parent piece was more around, you know, work, you know, childcare, things like that, that, you know, we have, are the, are the schools where we have a higher absentee also the early dismissals? And how, what is the correlation there? That are they, it's just a matter of logistics? Like, you know, family logistics? Or, you know, how do, how do we gain a better understanding of that?
So that, Monroe is one of our late, they're on the last stagger, actually. So they are one. So what we sometimes see there, that we're working on through these meetings, is people picking their children up early because of a variety. So then they're missing that last period of the day, which has come up. So that's all part of the meetings that we're having with that. But we're not seeing it necessarily with them being the last stagger, because they are, they release at approximately four o'clock, so.
But with the attendance technicians, they're not just helping to record the attendance, they're also visiting homes.
Yes.
And working with, with the schools and the attendance committees within the buildings.
And previously, they were just high school, but now we've really, with the theory of action, looked at how do we support?
Yeah, and I remember that discussion. I was just, yeah. Curious about the implementation.
And so just to kind of follow up and wrap us up, I think we all agree that attendance matters. And so I wanted to transition you to the second sheet that was handed out. And basically, this is just kind of an example And basically, this is just kind of an example of how we have looked at chronic absenteeism as well as attendance. We have looked at benchmarking it out over time, and we have selected a benchmark for this school year, followed by some action steps that we have identified, and certainly indicated the dates, the status, who's responsible, and budget or resource implications. And so this is a draft, because it's a working document. We are currently working on this and adding to it, modifying it as we see fit. But this is just to give you a little idea, this is a front and back document, not to spend a whole lot of time on it, but this is how we then expand it out into our work. All right, what are we doing this school year to support improving or decreasing chronic absenteeism?
So we are goal-driven in terms of how we approach this. It's not just anecdotal conversation.
Back to this one, just one question. A huge increase from seventeen, eighteen. Do we know what's happening there?
We've now maxed out K-eight, it's now full K-eight school. For the last three years, we've been building into the full middle school component. So we started as K-six, and went into the new building, then K-seven, and now K-eight. And so the school is fully occupied, if you will, through its grade levels. And so that's part of it, and.
The other part, in talking with Ms. Roundtree, the principal there, is that there's been a change in staff, which has impacted that, as well as, it's part of that is a new SDS who's been working more closely also with the guidance counselor, and that school also has, has a behavior specialist. I think there's also more targeted approach to making sure that the record-keeping and support are in place as they should be.
It's almost like the middle school kids came and brought their attendance problems with them to stay.
That's true, too.
I wanted to, to take a moment and give the division and the board some credit on items that we've been discussing for a long time. It not, it didn't necessarily come with the premises of thinking that the state was going to, or, and the federal government was going to layer on requirements about absenteeism. But for many years, we have talked about bringing back into the budget in school suspension, because we do feel and believe that it's better for our kids to be in school versus out of school. We've had multiple conversations about how we can address transportation and other health-related matters for our students, to keep them in the buildings and out, and prevent them from being out of school as possible. So I see the division as ha, as having been proactive, to the extent that we've identified it in budget, we've identified it in, in some policies. And this is just another way that we are appropriately looking at the data to inform our next set of decisions. And so I applaud us for being proactive and for continuing the discussion, and this was a good exercise. Thank you.
Dr. Gabe, can I just share one, one resource? There's a website called evictionlab.org, and on that site, you can go and look at eviction data by stating down to the evictions. Evictions, when people get evicted from their, where they live. And so there's a lot of data that's being looked at nationally around the impact of evictions also on student attendance. And so eviction, Tracy Richter or somebody probably could layer over evictions by, by our school attendance zones. And you may be able to see some trends there as well.
Thank you.
Dr. Gabe, I know that we're planning to move forward, but Dr. Bailey, the formatting of this, was this a, I think I had heard it mentioned at one point, that you all were talking about kind of a hybrid combining. Is this an example of that?
Yes, this is an example of that. You know, certainly, the difference in what you'll see today is that these are our action steps related to the, the measure. I call it key performance indicator. And so we have this for some other areas, you know, certainly our content area, some of the areas that we're focusing in on. So we can look at what are we doing, and then we can also see what may have had an impact at the end of the year.
If the division were to have a situation where we have a certain group of kids that have to be out of school, whether it's for a health-related outbreak or a natural disaster, is there a waiver that we can apply to from the state? Is that in the legislation, or is that something we might have to think about?
No, I'm laughing and rubbing my forehead, because this is the discussion that Region Two superintendents had with VDOE. We actually sent a letter to VDOE following the hurricane mandatory evacuation of Zone A in the fall. And what VDOE sent back to us was the state requirement for attendance and making up school days. And we were very clear in one of our regional meetings with Kent Dickey, one of the deputy superintendents and others, that that wasn't our question. That our question was, when the governor calls a mandatory evacuation of schools, then what's the, the level of required makeup around that? VDOE hasn't gotten back to us on that question, because, as you know, when they did the Zone A evacuation, which was the first time that had ever been implemented, about a third of our schools are in Zone A. This building is in Zone A. And, you know, what we faced at that time is that we didn't have any choice but to close. You know, do we close a third of the schools and then keep the other two-thirds open? So, and, you know, in Chesapeake and Virginia Beach, and mostly in the Hampton Roads area, again, and probably a little bit up to the northern neck, and, you know, the eastern shore. But if you have a Zone A school, and the governor calls, calls Zone A in your community, and you have schools there, and they call for an evacuation of Zone A, we've asked them to, to look at, because this was something new. And we, you know, many, many years ago, we didn't have the zone designations. And now that we do, you know, what's the state support of, when that's a mandated evacuation? Yeah, so that's why I rubbed my forehead. It wasn't a question, it was just that VDOE hasn't quite seemed to grasp the seriousness of the question and why we asked.
All right, thank you very much. Next portion of the meeting will be led by Ms. Campson and Ms. Bessine, as they are our committee members on school academic data and the accountability plan. We had a, a special guest slip into the room while we were in the midst of this discussion, and I'm just going to take a moment to introduce her, not to put her on the spot. But we have a new clerk of the board, Ms. Jackson, who is joining us today. So she's jumped in, ready to begin. Ms. Jackson, welcome to our, our meeting.
Ms. Jackson will officially start January twenty-second. But she took the opportunity today to, so we can have a chance to meet her and to observe a retreat in process.
And we welcome you, thank you for coming. Five minutes, okay, we're going to take a five-minute, five-minute recess, and then we'll come right back.